Oh.
I just.
Join with computer audio?
I think we're ready to go.
Are you ready?
You ready?
Yes.
Are we videoing?
Karen, am I ready? I think I am, okay. I just wasn't sure you look like you were still concentrating on some. I would like to entertain a motion to reconvene to open session after meeting in closed session to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body to discuss collective negotiating matters and to review the minutes of the board's closed executive session meeting held on May 11th, 2020. And any questions? Please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
From back? Yes. Delariva? Yes. Pitts?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Urnus?
Yes.
With that motion, we approve. When the motion approved, we will reconvene to open session. Carrie, would you please call the roll for open session? Delariva? Yes. Olson?
Here.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back? Here. McDoll?
Present.
Robertson?
Here.
Urnus?
Here.
I would like to welcome our guests via Zoom conference to tonight's board meeting. This time, I would ask all to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board Secretary Deb Pitts is unable to attend tonight's meeting in person. Therefore, I am appointing board member Dr. Leland Olson as acting secretary of routine. I would entertain a motion to approve the May 26th, 2020 agenda as it has been presented this evening.
So move.
Second. And any questions, discussion? Please call the roll.
Pitts? Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Delariva? Yes. Olson?
Yes.
From back? Yes. Robertson?
Yes.
Urnus? Yes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board's closed executive session meeting held on May 11th, 2020.
Salute.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Delariva? Yes. From back? Yes. McDoll?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Urnus?
Yes.
And at this time, the board has set aside time for anyone wishing to address the board. Dr. Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Urnus. I'm going to unmute Raymond, see if he's interested in speaking to the board today. Mr. Raymond, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I just got a quick. Can you hear me okay, doctor?
Yes, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, my question is, and I know you're working on it and there's no way that you can answer it. But if we do go back to school next year, or we have to do e-learning, are we looking at doing anything with special ed about hands-on, bringing them back in? You can address that to me at some other time during the summer. That's a concern I have about kids in special ed not, you know, being in confinement and having to do it from the internet, and especially the special needs, mild to moderate, or even worse than that. But anyway, thanks for your time. I know I'll mute myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to unmute our other phone people just for a second. Would anyone else that's dialed in via phone like to address the board? Hearing that?
We will proceed. Would any board member like to remove any consent agenda items for separate action? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented this evening. So move.
Second.
Please call the roll. From back? Yes. Olson?
Yes.
Delariva? Yes. Pitts?
Yes.
McDoll?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Urnus?
Yes.
We will move on to Dr. Henderson's superintendent report. Do you remember court's statement?
I do, thank you, Ms. Urnus. I'm going to ask, Ms., it's showing that you've got an iPad that's wanting to get on the computer to the system. Would you like me to admit that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's showing that you have an iPad that's trying to get into this, to the meeting, is that?
Disregard, I'm using my iPad. I was using my, I'm using both.
Gotcha, okay, then I'll let that go. I just, I didn't want to leave you out if you needed that. Okay, yeah, I've got a couple of topics that I wanted to discuss. And the first one could be fairly simple. We're looking at the board's schedule for next year. And so I sent out to the board members a schedule that Carrie created that is similar in scope to what we've done in the past, which is two, basically two meetings every month, with the exception of June and July. Our calendar starts the next, we've got our meeting scheduled through July already this year. So August is when we're starting. So I only had one person respond, and it was Mrs. Delariva, said that she would prefer to stay with two meetings per month. And I'm, I'm open to whatever. I do not have any, you know, it's perfectly fine with me. I just didn't know if we wanted to consider doing what some other area, most other area districts do, which is move to one meeting a month with committee meetings being on those opposite weeks. But I'm certainly, we've got a good, we've seen it. Are other board members, would they like to discuss the possibility of a different schedule? Or do you want to stick with, you know, just stick with our current schedule, basically our current schedule, and go from there?
For me personally, I think if the situation were as it is, I would entertain the idea of possibly having a, you know, committees, one meeting, and then the actual board meeting the following. But I think, just given the pandemic and the uncertainty, I think next semester, really the entire year might be a kind of a high-touch year where we're going to maybe need to meet twice a month to just kind of discuss how things are unfolding. So I think it's prudent to keep with the normal two-meeting per month. And then, you know, at this time next year, just see where we're at with things and then have a conversation then.
I think just one perspective I have is that with personnel, if you have one meeting a month, that's a long time to wait when you need to fill a position pretty quick. With, with a board meeting every two weeks, you can get new personnel in quicker. I've seen, well, I've actually experienced both situations, the two meetings and the one. And this one seems a little bit more inviting to adding to your staff as needed rather than having to wait for the official board meeting to approve. So I'm all for the two.
Well, then, yeah.
And if I mentioned, I, I wasn't concerned with so much as the management of the school district as that, I think it provides us plenty of opportunity for community input on a regular basis. I think that's very important, so.
Okay, well, then that's perfect. Then we'll come next month with the official board schedule to approve for next year. Then the other thing I just wanted to give up, just a really brief update towards officially, our last day of school is Thursday. It seems it's a strange scenario, but our official last day of school is Thursday. Our last day with assignments due for remote learning was this Friday, this previous Friday. So this week, there are some, some extra assignments that the kids are allowed to do if they want some enrichment type of things in some, in some scenarios. But we have to have time to get everything in and ready for the end of the year, just like we would in a normal year if kids were in, in class. And so the last few weeks, different buildings have had different times where the parents have been able to come in and turn in books. For most of our elementary classes, that's happening this week. For most of our elementary buildings, with the exception of Claire, because of asbestos, we decided to go ahead and get them started a little earlier. The middle and high school, where it's a big, a little bit of a bigger process base, they've done that over the previous two weeks because there's a lot more books to get in, sorted, organized, lockers cleaned out and things like that. So they are pretty much done and out spending this week of getting things organized and accounted and organized. So it's, and it's been a, you know, I think the, I'd like to commend the principals. They've handled it very, very well. And the parents as well, who have been patient and working with us to get all these things done, to get our books back to us, to get their items that they needed, to, if they wanted their kids to clean out their lockers, to get them in, especially at the middle school level, to get that done. And so I just wanted to let you know that it's going, it's going okay. And we're really shooting to get everything done by the last day of teacher attendance, which is Thursday for that. So any questions, just kind of on end of the year type of items?
Just wondering how, what kind of feedback you receive from families of seniors now that the week is over?
No, and we got a couple that, we got a couple here at the table. I would say that overall, once we got through there, it's kind of initial wave, like on the Sunday before the week, I'll call it graduation week, when people could come in. But I think that, that once people kind of realized what was going on and how high school really worked to make it a nice occasion when they came in, you know, the administrators were in gowns because of the rain, and it actually might have ended up working out better because of the rain. They decided to move everything indoors, have people to come in, have pictures on the stage. And once it happened, the first day, we just decided that that was the way we were going to do it from then on. And so I think that that worked out well. I'll say I did not receive any negative feedback once we got through that first day. And I'm sure there's obviously some disappointment of not being able to do the normal things. But for the most part, I think that people were understanding and people worked to, you know, parents and students and the faculty worked hard to make it a special, to still make it as special as they created. So overall, I think it, I think it was fairly positive, so.
I think the graduation ceremony, the virtual ceremony was wonderfully done. They did a wonderful job, the, being the emcee or mediator throughout the program. And it was almost as if we were all sitting there, no one had to sit on hard leechers. So that was even a plus for those family members that sometimes have to or think they need to be there an hour and a half ahead of time or something. So I think it was very done. I was very pleased.
And that'll be something that'll be there forever too, so they'll be able to have that.
I found myself just really engaged with it as opposed to last year, whenever we're all on the stage helping participate with it. I mean, I was just focused on every single student. And it was just like, oh, I know that person, or I wonder if that's somebody so-and-so's child. And it was just, it was a really well-done presentation, so.
I'll pass that along to Dr. Ramsey, so.
Yep.
And then the other thing that I, that I just wanted to have a bit of a discussion on was kind of our planning for moving into next year as far as remote learning. And of course, I'm starting to get quite a few questions on just reopening and all the different things that go along with that. So let me just share a few ideas. A few of you have asked me questions via email or over the phone, and I'll try to address those, kind of incorporate those in what I'm, in what I'm saying here. So we've already shared that some of our goals as far as remote learning and the changes that we want to make is that we're going to have devices in all of our teachers' hands, which is going to allow us to have sort of a uniform level of what we, we know what everyone has. We know what everyone has, the capabilities of doing, moving forward. And then the other thing is that we've chosen to use SchoolAge for our learning management system for K through 12th grade. And there was a number of reasons. It's been at the high school for years. Parents were looking for some consistency in having the same thing for, for all the grades. We're working already today on professional development for those K through 8, pre-K through 8th grade teachers, and getting them beginning on that process of that learning management system. We think that will help the communication, the toughest place for communication, middle school, just because they didn't have a system, but they had a lot of teachers. And, you know, at the high school, we didn't have near as many issues, and we know that it was because they had that system in place. So what's going to be happening, starting now, and really remember that we really haven't even finished this year. Today was really the first day of doing sort of PD, you know, up through Friday. Teachers were still thinking about this, this last year. But we have sent out a survey for all of our teachers. Every teacher's gotten a survey, a fairly extensive survey about remote learning. What's worked well, what's been a struggle, how can we improve moving forward? You know, because we need to be prepared next year for 100% remote learning, for a hybrid of remote learning and in classroom, and for in-classroom. Really have to have three different plans in place of what we're going to do. So we do need to be prepared. And so we're going to have every teacher's input through the survey that wants to participate. We're really trying to encourage all teachers to participate. What's already started is we've already started some, such a work with some small groups of teachers. But every grade level is going to have their own group that's kind of determining what's effective in that grade or subject as far as remote learning goes. And so we've, some of the curriculum department has started to have those conversations with those teachers. But that's going to be a process, it's going to take a few months to get through. Because as we make our remote plan, it's going to look different for a kindergarten classroom versus a third grade versus a sixth grade versus a high school, you know. And so they're all going to be different, and they're all going to have to be combined into one plan. So the teachers are going to be the main driving force behind what's really working and what, and how we can, you know, best move forward. So in addition to just to teach, it's where are we going to start? What's going to be our first quarter curriculum based on what we've missed this fourth quarter? You know, moving from one grade level to the, to the next, we're having those conversations. There's, there's a lot to think about as far as what's been missed in the curriculum. Sometimes you're able to make it up. Sometimes it's a totally different class, and you're just not able to do that. And so we're, we're thinking about that at every, at every grade level as well. We're talking about at the different grade levels, what's most vital if we have to go into remote learning. We're probably right now, our idea is that we'll focus more on math and reading and try to incorporate more science and social studies in the reading, maybe with a, and again, it just depends on how much we're in the classroom versus how much remote. The more remote, the more we have to focus on math and reading. You know, the more we're able to get into class, the more we can do some of those other, those other things as well. But we're having those conversations as well. In addition, we're, we're starting to have conversations about how we can create more resources for teachers to use in remote learning, get those teachers that are really comfortable creating videos and doing lessons. Maybe if you say we have a second grade teacher who's really good at doing that, asking that teacher, can she create 15-minute lessons for the entire first quarter? And then having those available for the second grade teachers, you know, are just ideas that we've got moving forward. It's, you know, it's, there's going to be certainly some component of live instruction where you're actually face-to-face with all the kids. But there's going to have to be something, kids can't log on the same time every day, especially if there's multiple kids in there. You have to have some resources that's there for the kids to come on and access when they have time, or when their parents have time to get on. And so, you know, we're having those conversations as well. And so we would expect by the middle of summer, as we get our guidance, the whole key is going to be once we get our guidance from ISB, and I'm sure it'll have to be refined as to what we're going to, what guidelines we're going to be allowed to have, you know, moving forward. So we're, we're waiting for that. And I know that once they come out, all the administrators will look at them and they'll probably say, well, this won't work, and this won't work, and it'll go back. And they'll have to refine that as well. But we, you know, the word is, we're supposed to hear that within the next week or so. We're supposed to get the first draft guidance that comes from ISB. So I'm really hoping that we do, because we can only do so much. We can prepare for a lot of contingencies, but we can't prepare for everything until we know what's going to be allowed, you know, and the guidelines that we've got. So as far as remote learning, that's kind of one component. The other component is our building guidelines for reopening. You know, what are we, how, how are our buildings going to be different next year when you come through the door? For instance, are we going to be able to space our students out a little bit more? One, one thing that we've asked all of our teachers and administrators is to be thinking about your rooms, be thinking about our spaces. If we, if we come back and we know that we have to space kids six feet apart, do we have room in your classroom with the furniture that's in there? Do we need different furniture? Just to kind of give you an example, I might have a teacher from Columbus email me and say, you know, the desks that we've got are really big, but there's some old desks that we've got upstairs that are smaller. We could fit more kids, you know, we could space kids apart further if we did that. Those are the types of things. Every building is unique, it's got different furniture. It's not like we have the exact same furniture in every single room and every single, you know, it's all depending on the age of the building, how long that furniture's been there. So it's kind of going to be within each building to kind of figure out how are they going to make this work once we get our instructions of what we're allowed. In addition, we're starting to have conversations about things like we'll have, you know, masks and gloves available, PPE, you know, will we have that? Will we be taking temperatures of kids as they come in? We're starting to have those conversations about how will that look if we, if those are the guidelines that we have to follow. So we have a component with our maintenance in our building, and we're talking with them every single day, you know, how are we going to clean things differently? If we get a situation where a student has, you know, is positive, what will we do with that classroom? Those are the types of things that we're having within that. What different supplies do we need to clean? We expect that we will have, you know, a much larger budget for cleaning supplies and things like that as we move into, to next year. And so there's a lot of different components that we've got. We've got, you know, sort of the learning component, the remote learning, but then we've got our guidelines for buildings as well. And then we're, we're starting to have conversations based on some of the guides that CDC gave us. And it made a lot of news this week. CDC gave guidelines that many educators just realize that it's nearly impossible for most schools based on the size and crowdedness of the schools to actually implement. And I guess the one positive about that is that they are just guidelines. ISB makes the rules that we have to follow. Now, that means not to say that they're not going to take those CDC guidelines and implement some of them. But, you know, for instance, one that CDC said was they thought that kids should be one to a bus seat and every other seat. That's not possible. You know, I mean, there's some things that we just know are not going to be possible to do. But with, especially with the district of District 7's size, 7,500 kids, and we already run three bus routes, you know. But there are some, there's some guidelines in there that we can certainly follow. And so hopefully, you know, there's smart people at ISB, I know there are, that are looking at these over and saying, we're not the only, you know, District 7 isn't the only district that's, that has crowded classrooms, that has, you know, problems, and that it's having to deal with all, you know, that has older buildings. And so we, the, the good news is I've got a lot of people asking, you know, the CDC guidelines, are we going to have to follow them? The answer is not directly, because they don't, CDC doesn't have authority over our, our school district. It's the state and local control that has that. But it is possible that some of those guidelines will be incorporated into what ISB sends. And so I'm just kind of looking. With that, let me stop for just a second, because I've, I've answered a few questions in some ways, some of you have asked me. Is there things that you'd like to ask as, you know, based on what you know what you've asked me? And I'm trying to remember everything we've got. Other questions while we've got here that you'd like me to address?
Well, you and I, there was some email correspondence that you and I had where, you know, obviously the plan's in place, but the thing that's on my mind is the availability of every child in the district to have access to both a device and then also internet capabilities and things like that. So is there, what's that?
I can speak to that a little bit if you'd like.
Yeah, you could.
The, the plan is that next year, we already had the plan in place to have our high school have a device in every student's hand. And because of that, there was, we, we employed some additional people to protect coaches at the high school, which will probably now be a mix of tech and remote learning sort of coaches to kind of help us with that process. What I can say is while the plan right now isn't to have a device in every child's hands, Kate, there's, there's a few reasons why it would be difficult to do that just from a perspective of, we're probably not ready, not only from a different infrastructure idea, but also from the teachers have not been trained yet in how to use those devices in the classroom. And all of our elementary schools don't have Wi-Fi yet. There's a few things like that. But I would like to say a couple of things along those lines. If a student needs a device, we can provide one. We've provided this semester devices for students. They ask, we provide them. Now, we don't have an unlimited supply, but we will serve more next year than we're able to give. We're working that, Wi-Fi is a little bit of a different story. We looked into a number of different options involving hotspots that might be available. There's some areas, our northern areas, even hotspots sometimes don't work up in those northern areas. So we've been looking at those types of things as well. We've been talking about the possibility of having Wi-Fi in our buildings, right outside our buildings. We've talked about the possibility of having them on buses, the kids could go on and, and utilize. But we are looking at different options. I just want to point, you know, as far as Wi-Fi goes, we're having some different options. There's also always the possibility that we can open up our schools for kids who just wanted to use Wi-Fi as well. You know, if the schools were closed, it's a remote learning day, but we have the doors open in the libraries where kids could come in and, and use Wi-Fi or devices if, if they need it. So we might need some partners. Hopefully, the libraries will be open as well. I think that they probably will be, but we'll certainly be looking for partners to help us with that. But I did want to say that while we won't have a device in every child's hand, if a child needs a device, we will get a device for that student. We'll get it.
And I think that's all you, we can really do at this point. And I, I just think, I just want the, the parents to know that if, if they're in that situation where they just, it's just not feasible for them to purchase one, or they just don't have one, that, you know, they'd have to, to come to us with that need, and, and we would be able to, you know, lend something to them, so.
If we move into that next year, we'll get that, no, we'll get that out there. We'll get, as we start the year, we'll get that information, make sure the parents are.
Very good.
A question I've had asked to me was, people have heard the option of maybe doing every other day attendance and things like that. Is that something you're exploring, or is that something that would have to come down from ISB or something higher?
Nothing's off the table, but it would certainly not be what I would consider to be a good option for District 7 and most districts around. I think the only way we would really want to consider something like that is if they set parameters that we just couldn't do within our classrooms. Like, this is just totally, if they, if they said that we could only have 12 kids in a classroom, we'd be forced to think of some of those options if that were to be, if that were to happen. But hopefully, that's not the case. There's a lot of issues, the parents have to work. So what would we do on the opposite day? And not to mention, if you think about it, if, if teachers have half a class one day and half a class the other day, they're not really able to provide remote learning because they've got kids all day. You know, so it's, it's another scenario. It's, you know, it's just, it's not a great scenario. We are, nothing's off the table right now, but that's not a, that's not an option we'd really like to use. There is certainly the possibility that there will be some students that do 100% remote learning. Again, if the governor, if ISB makes that an option and says the parents can choose that, then we'll have to look into possibly having to teach some teachers at different levels that all they do is remote learning. That's, that's not out of the question either. But again, it's going to depend on the guidance that we get coming down. But we are thinking about all those scenarios and all those contingencies to the best that we can. You don't want to go too far down a path until you know what, you know, until we know what's going to be allowed. Because otherwise, there's just too many things to consider. That first guidance will be able to make a little bit, be able to start going further with some of our plans.
Dr. Henderson, I have a few questions, and some I sent via email, and some are based on just conversations I've had with parents and the work I'm doing at SIUE as we make plans for fall. And none of these are meant to, you know, assume that we aren't thinking these things through. I just am curious if we are. First, are we going to be asking parents to provide feedback in any format via survey, et cetera, about what occurred in the spring or what the, you know, path forward may look like?
Yeah, we're going to, we are going to do that. We've got to come up with a reasonable survey. And I think, I've had a lot of people giving feedback, both positive and negative. And so I think it's going to be, but we will have something for parents, whatever. But it's not, it's got to be in a format where we can use. We can't send out just a bunch of open-ended questions because it's almost impossible to get that. So we're working on that idea of how we can, yes, in addition.
Second question I have is, has there been any consideration given to altering the schedule? And I know a lot goes into a schedule at a K through 12th school that is very different than higher education unions, et cetera. But one thing that we are very seriously considering and will likely happen at SIUE is we may start semester a little bit earlier or start semester. is we may start semester a little bit earlier or start semester online and end at Thanksgiving with the remaining part of the semester being remote, just to avoid kind of that, you know, all the holiday gatherings and everybody coming back to campus. I was just curious if there's been any consideration given to the calendar or things like that.
We've had a discussion with Madison County superintendents and we feel like that would probably be best to if we kind of decided as a county to do that, if changes, it would make more sense if we kind of all decided. It has been discussed, but there's a lot of issues that go into it. Of a change in calendar. So we are going to continue to discuss it with all the the area district superintendents. Because again, that has to go through our associations, besides all the boards. There's a few things at play. We're talking about it, but we haven't got too far, not near as far as the colleges who can set their own schedule a little bit, we can, like that. But we are discussing it. But right now, just discussions.
Nice to have two. I think these should be quick. One thing we're considering, SIEE is looking at outdoor spaces because as the guidelines come out, a lot of what you see is, you know, being outside is safer, at least in the interim. Has any consideration been given to ways we might be able to use our outside spaces for learning?
Well, it's just kind of the same. We've asked the principals to look at all their spaces in addition outside. And, you know, everything's on the table. Some buildings have more space than others, you know. Like unless there's hardly any outside space, you know, there's, there's different schools that do have different options. But we're we're just at the point where we've told the principals they need to analyze their building. They need to see what open spaces they've got inside and out that aren't currently be used, that aren't currently being used as classrooms. Educate kids here because we can space kids out more or make them in a safer spot. And so that's, that's where we are in that process right now, is everyone's kind of analyzing their own building and reporting back to us of of different spaces that they might have. So outside's not out of the question. Obviously, there's a lot of issues that goes on with outside spaces. But yes, we are looking at it.
My last question, and this is more of a staffing kind of personnel question, I guess. But one thing where our contingencies that SIEE make us worried about is if a faculty member, staff member, et cetera, tests positive and then exposes the classroom of people and is expected to quarantine for the 14 days and the same with any exposures they had. We already have a sub shortfall, obviously, or shortage. I assume that's something we'll look to for guidance from ISB on about how that would be handled.
Absolutely. Yeah, we we don't have the answer to that one yet. We're, they're looking through guidance right now on what if a student tests positive, what if a teacher tests positive, what if, you know, a student, someone in a student's house tests positive? I mean, there's a neighbor of a student test. I mean, there's just so many different options that are there. But we will certainly have procedures in place if a staff member tests positive, what to do. Yes, sub shortage is is definitely an issue, definitely something we're concerned about moving forward. But it's, and again, it might be a scenario where they move to a remote setting if that really happens within a certain classroom too. But we don't have the answer. We'll be waiting for guidance on on that.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions as we move through? And again, this is something in every single board meeting. You'll get additional information on this topic and kind of how we're moving forward.
So you said you're expecting ISB guidelines to within the next, the first set of ISB guidelines within the next week or so. Have they been in, has the staff at, from those offices been in contact with you at any point prior to this?
From ISB? No, no, they're not. They're, I mean, I think they've got a lot. They've got a lot of different places that they're gathering information from. But I will say that a couple of states have released guidance, Ohio and North Dakota. And we've looked at those and just to kind of start to get a little bit of an idea of what we might see. And I have a feeling that when, you know, all states are going to be looking at what's being released in other states as well. So we are working with the associations, with the Illinois Association of, with, and the unions as well, with, with the IBA and with the IASA and our administrative associations, the IPA. And there are guidance boards that are giving them guidance as well. It's not like they're just on their own out there. They're doing this. But as far as personally calling us, they haven't, yeah.
I just, I was also wondering, are some of those going to take form of mandates or simply guidelines? Or can we just not know the answers?
Don't know the answer to that. Yeah, it could be, it could be either. There will probably be some things they say you have to do this and some things they might give us an option.
Dr. Henderson, my concerns were already answered with your report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything else on this topic? Thank you, Ms. Burrows.
Okay, any notes going on? Okay. Our next item is a discussion item of which it's the first reading of the new board policy manual. And we will ask Dr. Henderson to give us the details.
I'll talk just a little, just a little bit about that. All board members know, of course, that we went through the process with IASB, the Illinois Association of School Boards, of creating an entirely new board policy manual based on press policy, which puts us in line with basically all of the other districts in in the state of Illinois. And as part of that process, we need to have our board policy manual open for public to see for for reading. And so that's the the state that it's in right now, is that it's it's there on board docs. And we will put that into public content to where people can can see it. But if if you, if you're familiar with other boards, boards, you'll you'll see that there's nothing shocking or surprising there. And just some of those kind of outdated policies that we've had in District Seven are just going to be removed. And so the next meeting when we come, we will approve this policy manual. And the only thing that I wanted to mention today was there was a couple of policies that there was just a, just slight changes in the wordings to help our policy line up with the district handbooks. And we gave the board those two, I think, that were in there, just so you could kind of see. And we ran this, we ran these by our HR, the people that helped us with HR, Bushu. We've run it by our attorneys. We've run it through all of our associations, have read, have read these over and we're we're good. And so our attorneys were the ones that suggested some of the, just the slight changes in wording. We'll have to work on one policy that has to do with medical marijuana as far as relates to faculty and staff. But that's one for now. We'll be okay with what we've got. But that'll be one of the first ones that we'll kind of look at as as making sure and we have to work with our association to to get language that's that's workable for us. So for now, we're in good shape. But remember, the policy manual is a living document that's updated frequently. And so as new rules and new laws come forward, it gets updated. That's the way that it should be. And so this will just get us, starting next month, we'll have a new policy manual in place. You've all looked at it. I know a lot over the last, really, it was through about February, we looked at a lot and really haven't thought about it too much lately. But just know that behind the scenes, all those other groups have been looking at it as well. So with that, if anyone has any questions about the policy manual, we can still make changes up on this initial one. Anything substantial that was changed though, would have to be run through all of those people that I just said again. So hopefully, we don't have any major changes that we want to make at this point. So does anybody have any questions?
At what point will this become live for people within the community to look at online?
We will, if we can put this in board docs for people to see right after this meeting. Now, once it's approved, it will have, it will actually, we will get it to where it's it's nice to meet into board docs where you can go section by section. And we'll have a link from the website that will take you directly to the policy manual, open it up by the number, and it will be there for the public to view. So it'll be much, much easier. Now, that will take a month or two to get up to speed, to have more than just a PDF. I mean, we'll have a PDF available day one, like that people could scroll through. But it'll be, we'll have a nice searchable thing where people can go in and go policy by policy. And it will be in board docs. But again, that'll take a little bit of time because we'll have to, it's not just a cut and paste thing. It's a thing you have to do some hand typing to get that done. So. Any other questions on the policy manual?
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will do our action considerations, first of which is the approval of personnel resignations and retirements. Dr. Spineup.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrows. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personnel matters related to resignations and retirements of employees as discussed earlier this evening in the executive session.
Salute.
Second. And any questions or discussion? Carrie, please call the roll. Olson?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Pitts?
Your duty, Deb.
Yes.
Thank you. From back?
Yes.
McDull?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Next is approval of personnel appointments. Dr. Spineup.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrows. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve personnel matters related to the appointment, employment, competition, or transfer of employees as discussed earlier this evening in the executive session.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Thank you. Please call the roll. McDull?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Approval of 2020, 2021 custodial and maintenance. Mr. Gorgi.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrows. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the custodial maintenance bid for the 2020 school year in the amount of $120,535.90.
Move for approval.
Second.
And any questions? Please call the roll. Delariva?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
McDull?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Approval of 2020, 2021 printer fax cartridges bid.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrows. Recommended the Board of Education approve the printer fax cartridge bid for the 2020, 2021 school year in the amount of $44,787.90.
Move for approval.
Second.
And questions or discussion? Please call the roll. Pitts?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
McDull?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
And approval of 2020, 2021 copier duplicating paper bid.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrows. Recommended the Board of Education approve the copier duplicating paper bid for the 2021 school year in the amount of $85,630.30.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions? I think after passing these three, then our district will be able to operate, right? Please call the roll. Delariva?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
From back?
Yes.
McDull?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Approval of 2020, 2021 District Seven Consolidated District Plan. Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrows. Just so the boards are aware, all districts that request grant funding must have a consolidated district plan on file with the Illinois State Board of Education for funds such as Title I, Title II, Title II and IDA funds to be released. They won't release any of those funds until sort of this basic plan is on file with ISB and verified as being approved. So it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the 2020, 2021 District Seven Consolidated District Plan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll. From back?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
McDull?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
We are going into our other items, first of which is, is there anyone wishing to address the board concerning any new business or that has a brief question?
I have unmuted everyone on the phone if you would like to say anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any, are any other business or any announcements coming from any board members?
I know this has been reiterated several times over the last couple of weeks, but, you know, I just want to thank everybody in the community for for helping with the celebration of the class of 2020 from households and businesses. I know in my subdivision, we had a parade for, I think, about six seniors. And, you know, it was, my kids were made signs and there were empty nesters ringing cowbells out in the street. And it was just, you know, to see a community, and I know that probably happened all over the United States, but I I think there were some special activities that were done here in the Edwardsville School District. So I commend everybody from, you know, faculty and staff to administrators and to our community as a whole. So, thank you.
Any other comments from board members? And to echo John, as well as the seniors, just the end of the school year, the tech department and all that they've done, as well as the administrators and teachers that have gone over the extra mile to have our educational system be a success for the students. So. Any other business to come before the board? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
And all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Be safe.
Ms. Wall.